I don't have a gavel, so we'll pretend that I'm gabbling here. So, that's all right. We'll bring our regular city council meeting to order. It is Monday, January 7th, 2013, 7:00 p.m. If there's anyone present, they require special assistance to participate in this public meeting. Please let us know. We'll try to assist you. Roll call?
Mayor Fetter.
Here.
Councilmember Crum.
Here.
Councilmember Fauch is absent. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Luthieber.
Here.
Okay. Are there any just amendments or removals to the agenda tonight?
I had a question, Randy. I had a question regarding a proposal of Resolution 13-2. Who initiated that resolution?
Mike did.
Okay.
Before he realized he was voting up.
All right. Okay. No further questions.
Second. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Luthieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Tonight's agenda has been approved. Agenda item number five is approval of the consent agenda. This is approval of the amendments of the December 10th, 2012, regular city council meeting. Set date of Tuesday, January 22nd, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. for regular city council meeting. That is due to Martin Luther King holiday rather than have done on Monday night. I hope Tuesday night works for everybody. Does that... Are they doing more for my four weeks? They usually grab to go Tuesday. It's all right, so... And approve claims register and cash report.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the change to the claim report of 2020 to...
Correct. Instead of 2332.
Right. I'll second it.
Any other questions or comments? Motion second. Councilmember Luthieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Agenda item number six, discuss and approve Resolution 13-01. This is a resolution pertaining to policies and procedures as set by the council.
Does that 1704 allow us to do the changes like we're doing today for the next meeting? Does it always have to be that first and third Monday except for the exception mentioned?
Those are just usually for your... You would want it to go regular, you're always going to have a chance here, but you can need to change one during there. And yes, well, it didn't last too bad, so...
I'll make a motion to reappoint Resolution 13-01.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. I'll read the resolution. Resolution 13-01, City of Logan. A resolution pertaining to policies and procedures as set by the Logan City Council. Due result that the city council has recommended the adoption of the following procedures, effective January 1st, 2013. Dates of council meetings, Chapter 1704, the first and third Mondays of each month, except where the first Monday occurs before the fourth day of the month, then the second and fourth Mondays will be the council meeting dates. Number two, designation of the First National Bank of Logan as the depository for all municipal funds and securities and Community Bank of Logan, Chapter 7.03. Number three, selection of city attorney, Chapter 20, Aaron Rodenbrock. Number four, mayoral appointments, Chapter 15.03, Mayor Poe-Tim, Michael Fauch shall serve with the pleasure of the mayor until the end of his term on December 31st, 2013, and Police Chief Elmer Smith. Number five is retain all present city employees. Pass and approve this on this day, January 7th, 2013. And are there any other questions or comments? I have a motion of second. Councilmember Luthieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Resolution number 13-01 has been approved. Agenda item number seven is appoint representative of landfill commission. I did this last year, and they want you to appoint somebody each year, and I forgot to put it on your last agenda. If you want me to continue to do it or if somebody else wants to do it, we'd like that. So, we have our voting rights with the landfill commission. We do need to have that person appointed so that we can have our vote.
And we turn that name into them.
Correct. Yeah. I will send it on to whoever it is.
And when are those meetings again?
Those meetings are the second Wednesday of each month.
You willing to do that again?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. That's fine. We'll just detail officially appointed, so...
And you can make a motion on that?
Yes. Yeah.
I'll make a motion, then, that we appoint the landfill representative for the landfill commission to be Mayor Fetter.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Luthieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Agenda item number seven, Mayor Fetter will be the landfill representative of the commission. Agenda item number eight, discuss offering police officer opening to Justin Miller. Chief, do you want to...
Well, just would like to move, you got it back on and everything done. I'd like to move forward. Getting hired, getting back to three men part.
Is he able to come, or equals to council?
I don't know why not, yeah. Well, we haven't offered him, you know, he doesn't know what the wages are or anything like that. I give him the, I've given him the pre-employment stuff, you know, as far as the contract, the handbook and stuff like that, let him read that all over. Then he's supposed to meet with us one more time. And then at that time, we'll tell him what the wages are. If it's, you know, it's going to be okay with you.
Let me...
What's that? When, how soon do you think you might be able to get down?
I have no idea. I'd have to call him. You're ready to go anytime?
Yeah.
Okay. Get on.
Agenda item number nine, discuss and appoint pool board members. Currently, five of them, yes, Rayjean Darling, Tyler Hinkle, Jamie Lapke, Dan Kors, and Tammy Hinkle. Carrie Waters does not want to remain on the board this time. They've all expressed interest. I don't know how you guys feel about it, you know, going into our fourth year. It seems like last year we had a pretty good year. A couple of these have only been on for years, so I think we just wanted to reappoint him, give him another year. Seems like things were pretty good last year. I think we only had one or two days and we were closed. That was kind of nice, for a long hot summer for the kids to remain through Labor Day weekend. It was pretty good for them. And that's usually one of our problems we have, so...
The only item that I would have, proposal, is that I'm excited to get Mary's offer her hat and ring. I would like to make it a regular habit, though, for these kind of openings to put them out at least to the public and see if we get any other offerings. Obviously, if we don't get anybody, it'd be nice to have a burden hand with Mary already showing interest. But I would like to make that a regular habit, whether we have anybody or we have the same people or not, we give an opportunity, especially when we have an opening, because those can come up at any time, mid-year, any change. Should we post those before we go out or do we...
Do they have any schedule planned right here?
Yeah, our first one's planned for January 16th. We meet the third Wednesday of every month, starting in January. Is that third Wednesday? It's one of those Wednesdays, yeah.
Can we point, do we have, and then post for the open spot and then fill that as a future point? Council interested in doing that?
Is Mary, is Mary taking the place of Gary?
Yeah. That's what she's showing interest in. My thought was to have, put that in the paper at least for a week or two and let somebody look by right now, have many names, it might come up if we have nothing.
I don't know if we need to delay this any longer, Skip. I think we got Mary ready to go. Let's just go ahead and approve. They've all done a good job. Mary, are you over the jump?
I don't doubt that.
Maybe I could amortize next year.
Just to my comfort, just to make the habit of...
Yeah, yeah.
Just make that a routine.
Yeah.
So, I make a motion that reappoint these pool board members, Ray Darling, Tyler Hinkle, Jamie Lapke, Dan Kors, Tammy Hinkle, and the new member, Mary Michael.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Do we appoint the president at the same time?
Yeah, we on the next agenda, item number 10. They, in the, what they call the commissioners, the commissioners actually got it.
I would like to say, I think moving forward, I'd like to see the, like, openings posted somewhere. I mean, we have openings for boards all the time and no one even knows there's an opening. So, I guess that's the only thing I'd have to say about it.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion of second. Councilmember Luthieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Pool board members have been elected for this coming year. Agenda item number 10, discuss and appoint pool board commissioner and secretary. I know that the past year, Ray, you were president or commissioner, as they call it. And I don't, who was secretary?
Jamie Lapke.
Jamie was.
And Dan Kors was vice president. If he did, maybe there's not a...
I don't see any vice presidents. That must be something.
Are they interested in holding the same title?
Huh?
Are they interested in holding the same title?
Jamie is, yeah. I would be until I retire. It really went well last year. I had a lot of support from the board and stuff, so...
I'll make a motion, then, that we approve Ray's, Ray Darling as the pool board commissioner and as secretary, Jamie Lapke. I'll second it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Luthieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Pool board commissioner, Ray Darling, and secretary Jamie Lapke have been approved. Agenda item number 11, appoint committee members. I've changed some of these for now, and I'm going to change them again halfway through the year, probably. What I have chosen for right now for 2013, on the street committee, Steve Clark and Skip Johnson. On the water and wastewater committee, Nick Luthieber and Skip Johnson. On the police committee, that's myself, Mike Fauch, and Dennis Crum. On Parks and Recreation, Dean Clark and Nick Luthieber. And on personnel committee, myself, Mike Fauch and Dennis Crum. On Parks and Rec, I know that, Nick, before you had mentioned about the parks getting together. I'd like to get that on the next agenda, that we vote for. The board members for the park board, I think they have four openings. So, I don't know if you guys want to get together and have a meeting. Oh, those are the old ones. I did this like five minutes before I came. Sorry. One of my copies hand out. I'm going to make recommendations back to us of who we've got. I think we have nine, nine members, I think, wanting those spots, so we can get those to, you know, if we need to, if they were. So, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm concerned with the changes you've made to a couple of them, particularly the personnel committee one in the middle of hiring processes we're engaged in.
Yeah. Part of the reason I've been having, it seems like we're taking forever. I know part of this, the last couple of weeks has been my fault because I've been so busy working, I haven't, I told you that I've set up the next meetings. But it's been three months since we've had applications ready, and it took us five weeks to get the first two interviews, and that's all we ever got done. So, I would like to do this and get the other two interviews done, plus re-interview those two people and get those four interviews done and just send them out here to the council that we can vote on, among those four people.
I had already talked to Marilyn the other day about putting the park board on the next agenda, so...
Okay. Agenda item number 12, is updating on clerk administrator position. As of right now, we had two interviews. We'll need to redo those, and we have two more interviews that we need to do between the four personnel that were previously chosen. Dennis, can you work on some of those up?
Sure.
And hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we can have something in front of the whole council to discuss, and hopefully, within the next month, we'll have, we can have them in here to visit with everybody and, you know, talk or position to somebody. So, we can send a lead to do a couple of things like budget amendment later on this year and stuff, and we need to get somebody in here so that they can learn how to do that, fit that process to us. Agenda item number 13, is discuss and approve Resolution 13-02. This is a resolution for prohibition of firearms and dangerous weapons in and on city Logan buildings and property. This is why I thought we'd actually already passed this a few years ago, but apparently we had not. This basically mirrors about what the county has on file for theirs, for their county I might just, with things that are going on in the world, you know, what happened in Connecticut and everything, need to try and protect everybody as best we can.
I'm just getting a look at this, though, Randy, but I was aware that it was coming up from your pre-agenda that came out on it. I wasn't sure on all the details, but at face value, I'm making it known that I'm opposed to any restrictions of our Second Amendment rights, stripping those from any citizens of Logan, as it pertains to our employees or any of the publicans here at this building. So, that's where I stand, at face value, what I read, how I interpret this. I don't know what steps Mike took to bring this on. I don't know if this has been looked at by our attorney or anything to bring it to this point, but I have some serious reservations about this resolution and what it states.
And from where I read it, no, it has not been passed by the attorney, so I said we use someone else's resolution to go forward with.
And whose, whose do you think that was?
Uh, with the counties. And so, basically, you know, it's just, you know, any fire officer or whatever would be able to still carry their weapon and everything. And it would just be, you know, on city grounds and in new city buildings. It's not, you know, just downtown or whatever, if they're, people have permits or whatever, they're valid permits if they're downtown, still fine, that's just on city grounds.
I think under home rule, we're allowed to do that. I know it, because there's an Attorney General's ruling. I understand.
How do you define city property?
City property would be...
Where? I'm confused.
I would say the buildings and the buildings around it.
Yeah, it's...
How far out?
It's just the city grounds. So, it would be city hall, the swimming pool, and the ground that it sits on. It would be our two city parks and...
That include sidewalks?
No.
Those are city property?
No.
My understanding, Randy, to include city vehicles that are employees that might travel out of town or around the park to do something would not be able to, if they have the right to do so, would not under this resolution.
That would be on city property. Wish the vehicle be on city property. Yes, you probably correct there.
I mean, obviously, Mike brought this forward to make this motion, he's not here...
Yeah.
To be involved in this discussion, which I would gladly entertain, but being that I'm sure knows that he's not here, I don't know who's prepared to champion this if not him, because I'm not.
I think we had to hold on.
Table to the next meeting.
Yes.
Put mics here.
Will we be back next meeting?
Yes.
Let's table it.
Is that good for you, Dennis?
Yeah. Did you say that this is the same thing that the county asked?
It was, I don't know if exactly worked for, I have not seen the counties, but I know that it was for most of the ones we picked up, so... So, we will table that till the next meeting and have that back on there, and mics here. Let's talk about that. Agenda item number 14, citizens' questions and comments. Citizens' questions and comments. Sorry, if any of the citizens have something they'd like to say.
On the 1302s?
No, we've tabled that till the next meeting, so...
They're not going to pass you. My name is Bill DeWitt. I reside at 1425 Jones Circle, and my wife and I are the owners of Logan Duke Best Hardware. I don't live in Queens. So, I didn't want to hear it anyways. My name's Bill DeWitt. I reside at 1425 Jones Circle, and my wife and I are the owners of Logan Duke Best Hardware. My wife, Chris, is a fourth generation Main Street business owner here in Logan. I am co-chair of the Logan Chamber of Commerce. I was recently asked by a friend of mine, Dr. Lee Heave, to make a public statement concerning the issue of chickens here in Logan, so here goes. To the surprise of many of you, I'm not now and never have been against the idea of citizens of Logan owning chickens inside city limits. A substantial part of my business is a feed dealership. It is, however, against the law. As many of you are aware, this past summer, I personally filed a complaint against Skip and Samantha Johnson for keeping chickens at their home. This complaint was obviously not filed because the chickens bothered me in any way. In fact, I would go so far as to say the Johnsons have done a fantastic job of maintaining their chickens, as evidenced by the lack of complaints from their neighbors. I filed the complaint about the chickens when it became clear to me that Councilmember Johnson was using his seat on this council to provide himself and his family rights and privileges which are denied to every other citizen of the community. Mr. Johnson, as you are well aware, there is a city ordinance against owning poultry within the city limits of Logan. Because you sit on the city council or because your neighbors do not complain does not give you an exception to that law. Mr. Johnson, you have sat on this council for five years and you've never made a motion to amend that ordinance. If you believe the citizens of Logan should have the right to keep poultry in town, bring it up for discussion. You are a city council member. It is, or at least it should be, what you do.
I'm Terry Francis at 509 North Second Avenue here in Logan, and I just wanted to bring up a point on that last item 13 about the Resolution 13.2. I wholeheartedly support Skip Johnson's reason for holding back on this resolution because I, too, am in complete agreement with him on the Second Amendment rights, and I would hope that the council would take a very hard look at this resolution and see its merits, if there are any at all, and hopefully, that their decision would be to not only just table this for one meeting, but for actually all time and not worry about this at all. I don't believe we've had any instances of reports to the city police about problems in this area, so I don't know why we need to go there. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, agenda item number 15, deputy clerks' comments.
Mid-American Energy has donated $250 to the city. That's through their community contact program, and they would like it to be used, ask, talk to us about putting wireless here in the community center with a repeater at the pool, and they felt that that would be enough for us to do that, so we have a check. So, I believe you were going to have Chris Walzki take a look at that. And we've had a lot of inquiries when people meet here, and I think it will be beneficial to us. And the auditors were here last Wednesday and Thursday for the fiscal year 2011 and 12 audit, and I'm assuming are now writing their report.
We had talked about in past security and things with wireless routers and different systems being closed. Is that any issue with discussing that? Is this incorporated into that?
I talked to Chris about it.
I talked to Chris about it and stuff, and he said that, you know, if we just set up a different password and there's ways to block it, that we shouldn't have any issues. You know, with a password protected, you know, we can change that often, or change it even, you know, for each group that comes in here, but it would run separately of what like Marilyn's looking at on her computer and stuff, so they wouldn't be able to actually access what she's got, it'd be a secure, secure router.
So the wireless portion would be open, though, and free to the public, correct? That would be an open hotspot, in other words, using?
If that's the way you guys want to do it, or we could do it as password protected.
I thought that was the answer, I thought it came in without, we have wireless access, but I was looking at isolating somehow, unless you're having any concerns, what you have, yeah, what are on the city.
I'll talk to Chris about that, yeah, we definitely don't want anybody hitting it.
It seemed like we covered it when we touched on this maybe a year or two ago.
Yeah, and I will bring that sort of up to it again, just to make sure. They shouldn't probably be able to access her actual computer, but we don't want them even accessing like any of their email files or anything like that, so. And usually that's password protected, but yeah, we just want to make sure that, you know, that somebody will tend to be able to choose against. Any other questions or comments on those items? Okay, agenda item number sixteen is budget work session. Everybody's welcome to stay for that also.